All right, Manette County Commissioners are now in session, are back in session. This is a public hearing for road validation requests concerning Lower Crock, excuse me, Lower Rock Creek Road in Incombe, Idaho. Turn the time over to Kyle.
Go ahead and make a motion that we open a public hearing.
Thank you. I have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, now Kyle.
Kyle Vermester, Public Works Director. I guess you guys have got the packet, been able to look over the packet. As you said, this is a validation over the east end of Lower Rock Creek Road. The reason why we have came to this is because of some doubt that exists and is part of Idaho statute.
And again, just for clarification sake, what does a road validation mean and do?
So what we're trying to do is if there's any defect or doubt that it exists, if the road's changed in any way, we're just trying to validate whether this is a... There can be two things to look at today also is, is public access and county maintenance. So they're two different things also that you'd look at, but what we look at is any maintenance we've done or any change in the highway and stuff like that.
So you are requesting for us to validate this as a county road?
There's two parts of it. I think, listening to who wants to speak today and then see where we're at with their information.
Okay, all right. Any further questions for staff before we...
Not at this point.
Okay. Mike, you want to speak or you want to wait a second and then speak?
I need to speak, but I'm not really sure what I'm...
Okay, all right. Renee, you want to come on up then?
Sure.
You just sit right here.
Right there.
Introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Renee Svergen. I'm a real estate agent and I have 160 acres listed just to the side of Lower Rock Creek, to the north of Lower Rock Creek Road. Mike and I have discussed it multiple times and I've drove Kyle nuts at Road and Bridge trying to establish whether or not it is in fact a county road because it does show it on GIS as a county road. In fact, it shows that both Lower Rock Creek and the driveway that goes to the property are county maintained. It looks like the driveway that goes to the property is not county maintained, at least from what we've evaluated at this point, but we need to gain access to the property because it's essentially landlocked right now, so.
Okay, questions?
That's my story.
So, looking at the map, this is, you go up to Lower Rock Creek and then Bonneville comes across and then the Nestor Place comes down underneath and this is what, in between right in there? Or is this, go straight on up to Bonneville?
So it goes straight up past Lower Rock Creek, past Bonneville and goes straight up towards the towers.
Okay.
And then there's a section that heads back towards Pebble Creek that has access or shows access at 1.2.
And the county has maintained the road going up to the towers, but not the road going over to this property?
Almost to the tower, so there's a section that just has an easement and then some of these records of surveys show, even in their record, it shows that there is a county right-of-way that goes to that corner and then it also shows that it goes over to this property. So the conflicting information that we kind of have is, what I added is, the state we're getting paid through the state all the way to that property. So the jog, so if you go to the east and then the jog over to the north, that whole distance.
So just to make sure we're understanding what you're talking about, this in red.
So from Bonneville that way.
Okay.
The only thing that I've found is we did maintenance on the part that goes to the east, so it's from Bonneville, to where the jog.
And this is where the tower is and this is going over to this other property.
To the property.
Which, which I don't know if I've ever been on that road. I've, I've been up to Tower multiple times, but I guess I didn't realize if there was a road there, if it wasn't private property.
So we have maintenance records of doing that stretch going to the east, but not over to the property, which isn't to say that it is, could be, at some point in time was a public access. We just happen to maintain it. We do have roads throughout the county that are very lightly maintained and then some that are never maintained, but they still are in access.
And we have so many, I've dealt with so many people that either want a road closed or want it public access and so this is a pretty touchy subject.
Oh, I would assume it is, yes.
In both ways, but, and then I have a concern because we have quite a few properties that we're plowing people's driveways. And I don't want to get in the habit of the county paying to plow somebody's driveway that the public doesn't have access on either side of the road or at the end of the road. I mean, it just, so where does this fit in, in that category?
So this has no winter maintenance, it's more of a dirt, all the section, the whole section is pretty much dirt. You do have other sections throughout the county which like go to BLM or Forest Service that are similar to this. We only put amount of maintenance into is what's needed, is what's traveled. So we do traffic counts and then we can kind of understand how much the usage is for how much maintenance. So this has been a very, very low maintenance. But the only thing that I, we looked and looked and we couldn't see like an easement agreement between the property owners through there, but then we also seen that it showed up as like a county road, so I don't know if that's the reasoning why because that's the only access to this property, so I wouldn't assume that it was landlocked because it's looking back on maps, on Google and everything, that road's been there for a long time.
And I have documentation from the 40s, the Powers family owns that 160 acres and I have documentation from the 40s that they've communicated with the state of Idaho, the water department, that kind of thing. So it's been regularly accessed by the Powers family and then for the last 40 years, the Lish family has also been given a license to utilize the acreage while the Powers family was in Alaska, so it's been traveled regularly.
But not generally by the public because it's going into private property.
Yeah, well, so, so the Lower Rock Creek that goes up to the cell towers, because it goes to the forest, I assume that that's...
Is opened all to the public.
Yeah, yeah.
Where this dead ends in, I mean, we just shut off part of Sorrel for this same reason, because it deads in into private property. So you don't want to be going back and forth in two different directions, you know, as a county. This, this guy comes in and buys a property and so now they want the road shut off, this guy comes in and wants it open because a real estate agent wants to have people coming into this, so. That's my, my, I'm trying to, in my own mind, figure these things out.
So what do you consider maintenance? When you say that it has had some county, does that mean you go grade it once a year? Just to knock the high points off of it?
Yeah, for a limited maintenance, like on a dirt road like this, it's one, once a year maybe.
No gravel, just, you're just knocking the ruts out?
Just to blade it to get the ruts out of it and help put in control and stuff like that.
That road's been there since I was a kid, but it hasn't improved much because I remember being on that road a long time ago. The tower, I've been up to it quite regularly, so as far as I remember, it's probably been a county road, but like you say, with very limited maintenance and probably no, has it ever had any winter maintenance?
No.
So it's been designated as a no winter, winter maintenance. So how does somebody go into that if they own that property, they're on their own with either a snowcat or a snowmobile or a four-wheel drive or whatever, so, and we've never went in it at all with any snow plow.
No. So for like a real estater to, to do any kind of work with this property, part of that when they subdivide or whatever is they would have to bring that road to what standard they're changing it to, whether it be gravel, paved, whatever. But then also, we do have a formula on what becomes winter maintenance, so if a few people live up there, we go by distance and houses. So however long the road is and how many houses it will attach to. And like right now, it's got, I think, one resident or one structure.
Yeah.
So it would be up to them to winter maintain.
With limited occupancy, how often are they there? Are they there all year long or are they there just during the summer?
So currently, the Lish family utilizes the cabin in the summer and just kind of hangs out up there. The first time I was up there was last spring and there were some like tracks, you know, snowmobile type tracks, so I'm assuming somebody, if it's not the Lishes, the neighbors are kind of utilizing it. Yeah, but, and the individual that wants to purchase it intends to just put one single family home, he does not intend to subdivide it at this point in time.
So basically, what you're asking today is to make it validate that it is a public road?
Yeah.
And that it'll be access, this is your only access into this 160 acres.
Yeah, Lower Rock Creek and then I call it the dogleg or the driveway, but it's, I don't know, maybe quarter of a mile long.
Well, I don't like driveway if it's public access, so.
We won't call it a driveway. We'll call it a dogleg.
I don't want us maintaining anybody's driveway.
Yeah, no.
So simply put, if we do validate this, it will help you develop this and add more homes up there?
It, well, it will help me sell it to the individual who's had an offer on it for five months and he does intend to build a home, one home.
So just one home?
Yeah, that's his intention.
So how far, do you go down the dogleg, something like whatever we're calling this, do you knock the rough edges clear to the residents or only to a certain point?
We haven't in the past. We go to where the dogleg starts.
Okay.
And then we've turned around right there and came back out.
Okay, so at that point, once they would turn around there, that would be, in my understanding, would be the, that would be the extent of, you know, designating it as a county road.
The turnaround.
Yeah, some turnaround, yeah, not down into somebody's home. That would still be private access and we would not have any, assumed any liability to that. Am I understanding that right?
I don't think so. I think that the dogleg ends up, that's what she's saying, that we would make sure that that is public access, which would...
Then she has connections.
Say that actually that dogleg part would be county property or access county road.
So you remove the turnaround from where it's at now to the end of the dogleg.
Yes, that wouldn't be requiring us to do all sorts of maintenance because of that.
So then, under your schedule, you would actually blade clear to the turnaround point right in front of the, the home or cabin or wherever it is. That's what I'm trying to see because at some point you've got to...
To the property line.
Yeah, so you're going to the property line, you're not going to the start of the dogleg, you're going down the dogleg to the property line.
That's what it shows today on all of our state records.
That's what I, we, because that's what we're trying to do is validate how far that's going down there.
Mike, you have any thoughts?
Yes.
Do you mind if we bring Mike up?
Do you want me to move or?
You can stay, you're fine staying.
Thank you.
State your name, please.
Mike McNabb. Address, any address?
No.
Okay. So we have MANT, we talked about it, I, we don't deny that there's access to the property. We feel like they can use that dirt road all they want. I ask if, you know, are they wanting to upgrade the road or they want utilities over there? I don't think any of that is part of what the current access is and I don't think that should, you know, without our agreement to that, I don't feel like the road should be developed or, I didn't, I wasn't aware that it was considered a county road and I didn't, even with this conversation, I still don't see where that's coming from. To me, the county road ends at the east point where, where you turn north on the dogleg and so I don't see why that would, just because someone wants, you know, a county road over there. We're not denying access, that's been there for a long, long time, but, but to increase that access for, you know, through our property, I don't feel like that's right.
How is this holding up your sale?
Well, in order to be able to obtain a building permit, there has to be recorded access to the property. And so when Mike and I spoke, my seller, the Powers family, made an offer to Mike to gain access. Mike then asked if they would be running power because there's both fiber and power because of the cell towers, just right at the end of the dogleg. And of course, they would want to run power to the, to eventual house. Mike then stated that he needed more money. I'm not a farmer, so I asked if it was going to be a deterrent to his farming operation because the road is very clearly there, it's, it's kind of gravelly, they don't plant any crops on it and haven't. Would that, you know, deter your farming operations? He said, no, we just would like more money if you're going to run power under that road to the, to the thing. So that's kind of where we last spoke and, yeah.
So technically, Mike owns the dogleg.
We own it property, yeah.
Okay, and you've granted them access to use that dogleg to access their, their property?
Yeah, I mean, I think they have access just from the years of using it.
Right.
And then we don't deny that, I mean, that's, I think that's fine. We do, we do a different kind of farming than we used to, we no-till farm and so that road's considered our field and we don't plant it because it's going to get driven on, but when we used to disc and things, we'd just plow right through the road and then drive over it and, you know, it's part of our field. We have fields on both sides of the road. So if we come in there and we start putting in a gravelled road or a paved road, you know, then we've got to deal with that. We can't, but borrow pits and that type of thing, you know, you're going to then have an obstacle and I, we have several properties where we have had to buy access in order to get to them. You know, if it's more, if it's wider or if it's, if we're developing something, we don't just, that's not, hasn't been granted just because they're, they're using that 10-foot wide dirt road to get to the property, that doesn't mean that now we have other accesses. There's a road, Upper Rock Creek's just down another couple miles and about 10 years ago, we tried to get, have that as a county road and that was abandoned. The county come out, they agreed that it worked it, but my understanding, they abandoned it because they didn't want to have to do it. And that was a much more established road than this is and, and so I don't see why this would be different than that. Something else I wanted to clarify is, my understanding is the county road ends where this dogleg goes north, I'm not sure what the access, it was mentioned that, that that's public access up to the forest. I, I guess I'm not sure where that's coming from. I know, we gave access through Bonneville Road all the way down to Fish and Game, to Fish and Game and that gets access to all that public land, so I, I'd like to clarify, I don't think there's access up through the towers. I mean, there's a road up to the towers and then there's another bit that you get up to the public property, which people have used, but I sure don't think that's, I don't know, I just, that came up here and so I just thought I'd kind of see where that's...
The only thing that we're showing is, we have it to the, where the dogleg is and then from there on, it shows that you just have different easements for the different...
For all the tower companies.
Tower companies.
But there is a spot right there too, above the towers, that you can jump onto the boundary trail as well and that's been there for my whole life, I guess, growing up out there, but I, I rode on my motorcycle there a lot and I assume that was public access, but...
If not, you're in trouble.
Yeah.
Well, we don't like shutting stuff down, that isn't our intent. I don't think, there's one further south and they're right through the field and we have, the Fish and Games helped us to eliminate that and in my mind, we have given access and so where are we going to stop that? And the erosion on the road, there's, you know, unless the county wants to come and maintain more of that and I don't think there's resource to do that, I mean, so.
Can I ask a question? So the land uphill, I guess, above the cellphone towers, is that BLM land? What is it?
Forest Service.
It's Forest Service land?
Yeah.
And is that trail that we're talking about that's above, is that a designated forest trail?
We have what they call a boundary trail up there that I think was established with the Forest Service, I don't know if it's actually on Forest Service, but it actually goes around, it goes clear around to Bob Smith Canyon, I mean, it's been there for a lot of years, people ride motorcycles or four-wheelers. I think you can go clear over to Inman.
Yeah.
Through that, so it's been an established, we called it the Forest Service Trail, so I assume that's forest controlled.
Yep.
In fact, I think Rochelle Gilbert helped put that in years ago, years ago, but it at least went in it, so, does that answer your question?
It does, yeah.
My question still goes back to, and I have a, this is kind of one of those touchy subjects for me because I watched them close down what I call Bell Marsh Canyon, that we always used our whole life until somebody purchased it and then fenced it off and the county let him get away with that, well, there was proof that graders from the county did go up in service. What you're saying is, going back to this, how far do you take a grader to maintain that road? Is it the start of the dogleg going down in there? Where, where have you gone to where we set a precedent that the county has did some maintenance? Or is that actually going?
And that's where it's going to the east and as soon as it doglegs, that's where we stop. We haven't went any past.
So you, there's no precedence to going down the dogleg into the property?
We have not.
Okay, because I think that's where we're, I mean, if we have no precedence in doing that, but you do have records that show we have maintained the road, whether it's once a year or whatever and it's through your property, right? So how do you not admit that that, because it was maintained once a year, that it's not a county road? To that, to the top of the dogleg, not clear down the lane?
So if you look at, when we do the reverse of this and we're vacating or a road, we look at, has the road been built? Have we maintained it in the last 15 years? And we look at that and if they don't meet any of them, we'll vacate it and remove the road. So if you looked at that stretch of road, it would be, in our eyes, one that you could vacate because we haven't did any.
The other part to vacating too is if it has access to Forest Service or BLM and this dogleg does not.
This one doesn't. That's about it. Okay, Mr. Moser, what are your thoughts?
I don't want to start doing driveways. That's kind of where I'm at.
Yeah.
I just, I, I think that this may be where you talk with, as landowners and come up with an easement or something of that nature, I mean, you guys have already been talking dollars and stuff like that, but I, like I say, this just dead ends and we just shut down the top of Sorrel for the exact same reason.
Yeah, and I agree, there's a precedent to this, it's long-reaching effects and I understand that it limits maybe somebody's property that's been up on the other side of that, I understand that, but I, I don't know the, kind of like you said, county doesn't have resources just to maintain roads forever to private driveways. There's a reason why all of our grandparents moved down off the benches, down to where there was winter maintenance, where there was access to that, but I don't have a problem if we have graded, if we have a history that we would continue to, once a year or whatever it is, go grade it to that, top of that point, but down into, whether you call it the dogleg, whether you call it the driveway, I don't think that should be part of the county system. That is again, an agreement that I think is between the property owners and, you know, however you want to do that with easements, with whatever it is. And if they're only using it seasonally, I don't know if that's a big deal, but that's how I'd probably look at it.
Okay, and, and I concur, as I look at it on the map here, that, there's no way that looks like it could be a county road. And I agree with Commissioner Moser, I don't think we want to get in the business of filing driveways. I can see where, you know, the farm uses it and how you guys use it, so at this point in time, I'm in agreement, I believe.
I'd make a motion that we come out of the public hearing part of this and if we need to discuss more, it's commission, if we do so.
Okay, we have a motion, any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, final discussion.
So with the, with the information that we've been given, I would say that, just like I said, that I don't think that the county needs to maintain this and start taking responsibilities for property that dead ends into private property.
Okay, so you would deny the request for...
Well, I wasn't making that in a motion in case somebody else had a discussion, but I would make that as a motion if there isn't more discussion.
So just for clarification, here again, this terminology of vacating, there's no question that we're maintaining the road up to, towards the towers.
Correct.
But once it turns off of that...
Once it turns off of...
Are we looking at the option of vacating the road through McNabb's property, that we're not even going to blade that once a year and just say that's not a county road?
We don't blade that now, do we? Or did I misunderstand it?
You, they've done it in the past, but...
First section?
Yeah.
Let's see.
No, the dogleg.
No, no, I'm not talking about the dogleg, they're talking...
The first going to the east to, to the dogleg.
Right.
We have did very limited end, just so the commission knows, when there are dirt roads like that, they can be on the state, but we don't get any funding for it, so that's, we're not getting any funding for any of that.
So I say that the road going up to the tower is maintained as it has been in the past, we just don't have this dogleg on.
Okay, and on the other side of that, the county has dead-ended coming from the other direction, right? Up Bonneville, you said, do you, they used to have access clear across, but they've, they've dead-ended it coming from the north to the south?
You're talking Bonneville?
Yeah, Bonneville.
As far as county road, I think it is there.
So it is, so it's been abandoned that far, so with that, so are we...
That one, that one is a public access, we don't do the maintenance on it.
I get that, so, but the little stretch from going straight up over to that, is there any reason to maintain, to keep that as a operating county road or designation?
The one that goes to the tower?
No, the, where it turns off.
No.
So if we're not maintaining it, then I don't think it should be showing it on any kind of a map as a county road.
Okay.
So whatever the terminology, whether we're vacating that or whether or not recognizing it, just not validating it, I don't know.
Well, the, the request was to validate the dogleg from Lower Rock Creek to the landowner's property, that is the request, that's what the, the... The motion or the discussion point is to deny the validation from Lower Rock Creek to the homeowner's property, the dogleg.
Okay, I agree with that definition of it.
Okay, so based on that definition...
And at that point, the homeowners, the property owners have got everything, so you know where you're going to go from here, so.
And, and is it county road from Bonneville up to the dogleg?
Yes.
Saying that, right?
Yes, we're, we're not talking about Bonneville today, we're just talking about...
From Bonneville up, yes.
Up to there, but not all the way to the towers, just to that.
So would you just restate your motion one more time, Commissioner?
I'd make a motion that we deny this validation on the dogleg off of this road on upper, or lower, Lower Rock Creek.
Okay.
Off of Bonneville Road.
Okay, all right, anybody clear? Yep, okay, we have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, denied, sorry about that.
Well, I mean, the fact that we've confirmed that that first part is actually county is... is, is big, so sorry.
Okay.
Poked your eye out.
Thank you so much.
Hopefully we just got clarification with where, where everybody sits right now.